It's eight forty-five, it's about eight forty-six. The Liberty County Commissioners Court Public Meeting, Commissioners Court July thirteenth. Public hearing agenda is with Ms. Chamberlain of County Clerk on archive fees. And so we had to sit here for just a little while and see if there are any comments concerning archive fees for her office and her efforts in revitalizing and restoring her archives. Anything you want to add to it?
No, sir. This is our continuation that we're required to do every year during the budget process. It's a ten-dollar fee that we add to certain recording documents. And it is a specialized fund that pays for these stuff I put on the table. You know, I wish you were here to see it, Leon, because this is examples of the stuff that's coming back. You can also see from the maps up there, the damage that was going on inside these books, et cetera. So we've got a copy of one of the early nineteenth-century commissioners' minutes. We've got early nineteenth-century marriage licenses, and we've got early nineteenth-century deed records right there. And then these are some of the examples of the maps that have come out, documents that have been restored and put onto, you know, onto rice paper for restoration. The company that we are working with just got bought out. But my understanding is, is it will not change the contract, it will not change the amounts, and it will not change the product that we're getting. So at some point, the contract will go from DPS to CO File, because CO File will be absorbed into, I mean, DPS will be absorbed into CO File, but it should continue what we do right now. So all I'm looking to do is just take it out one more year. Because we've been so busy, we've been putting a great deal of money into that account, so we've been able to do a great deal of restoration work. It's moving on at a lot faster pace than we originally thought it would. So we might actually get this done in my lifetime. Anyway, if you've got any questions, ask me. I've got copies of the archive claim here, if somebody would like to see it. I think I sent them over there on the table, and copies of the stuff that we're doing. And it's just, we're going to keep going forward with it, and restoring and preserving Liberty County history. Any questions?
All right, we're going to give a few minutes and see if anybody wants to have any comments.
I mean, truthfully, with the hundred and one complaints I get a day, nobody said a word or complained or had anything negative to say about this program whatsoever. So I think most people understand we need it, and...
We'll fix it down or lose it forever.
Yes, exactly.
I especially like the book that the sheriff has about paying to find out chickens.
Well, we've got, we've got some interesting ones back there, that's for sure. These are examples of ones, though, that, you know, these are where people access frequently. They have a lot to do with not just the transfer of title within our county, but genealogy records. I mean, people want to know, they want to see their grandparents' marriage license, that kind of thing. Those maps are still very relevant. They're old subdivisions. Yeah, they might be one-hundred-year-old subdivisions, but they're still there. And they were, they're pretty severely damaged. We've lost big chunks of those maps. But what's left, we've preserved. All the papers being treated. I think the deed record I brought is one of those that's extremely faded. I want you to see that if you're interested. And if you come back to the office, you're going to see a lot more color, because these books are coming in kind of fast and furious, you know, because we're doing as many as we can while the archive fund is building at such a rate. We've been adding forty to fifty thousand into it a month, so we've been able to process that much in restoration per month. And it makes a difference. We're getting a lot of books done. So at the same time, there's a whole bunch that have never been scanned, never been indexed in the computers. We're doing that at the same time. It's a big project, but it's a very workable project. And so, but the law says you guys have to approve keeping it going every year, so that's where we're at right now. Continuation of the archive program.
That's only a public hearing today, so this is not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, yes.
Later?
Yes, to vote to continue it.
No vote now, we're just going to have a public hearing.
That particular fee has to be assessed yearly and can only be used for this project. And when this project is over, then that fee goes away. But while we're doing the program, you have to approve it yearly, and that's what the hearing's for. Okay, maybe that's out of your way. You want me to leave the money?
I'm good. Have you already done the brand directions yet?
No, you want me to talk about that? I won't wait till the meeting.
Go ahead. It's about, stop it. As for the adjournments, motion to adjourn, and a second.
And a second. Second motion to adjourn, and a second.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bruce, to state of Leon. All voters say aye. Likewise, we have. And we will wait a few minutes and start the regular adjournments.
I think ten percent of people are on left hand, but I wish I could.
Can you meet this for a moment?
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
The Liberty County Commissioners Court Public Meeting, Commissioners Court, July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. It's about nine oh three, by my watch. We have a form established, the director and show that Commissioner Kowalski and Commissioner Archer are here. Commissioner Wilson is on Zoom. I don't see Commissioner Whitmire. But we do have a form established in this form of court this morning. If, before we start, Alfredo Franco.
Yes, sir.
Would you come up here just for a minute, please? I want to introduce y'all to Alfredo Franco. He's our new member over at the engineering office.
Yes, sir, pleasure.
Yes, good to see you. And you come to us courtesy of United States Marine Corps, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How many years you stay there?
Twenty-three. Twenty-three allowed me to hang out.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you so much for your service. I want to ask you this morning if you would help us with pledges.
Absolutely.
All right, so if y'all would all rise, Alfredo's going to leave us in our pledges, your US flag and Texas flag.
And just look again. Just looking for it.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Texas flag, sir.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, and under God, one indivisible.
Alfredo, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Pleasure. Sheriff, please, please send our dedication this morning.
Pray for me, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we want to thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you give us, Lord. We thank you for your Son, Jesus, that died on the cross for our sins, Lord, so that we'd have a chance to be with you in heaven. Lord, I just asked, as we go through this meeting, Lord, if you'd be with us, be with the commissioners and the judges as they make the decisions that affect the county, Lord, give them the wisdom to make the right moves, Lord. Lord, thank you for their dedication. Lord, I ask that you be with each and every one of us. Forgive us where we fall short. In your Son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right. Yes, we don't have any notices or proclamations this year, but I will make one quick notice. Today's the thirteenth, tomorrow's fourteenth. The Liberty Day Chamber Commerce luncheon is tomorrow at Mainville Liberty Center. And Mary Ann Campbell, who's been the director over at the Liberty Day Chamber Commerce for thirty-one years, will be retiring right at the end of this month, and maybe as soon as tomorrow. I'm not sure. Vanessa, what?
She's not even going to be there tomorrow.
She's not? Okay. Anyway, but let's, just in honor of Mary Ann, let's give her a hand for thirty-one years of driving this. That's a tough job. It's probably going to be even tougher than being governor. Okay, that was a ton of you. Come on, guys. I was wondering, I was looking at the booth again last night, and I think we have two hundred and thirty-four Texas Rangers stay out of the state of Texas, and there's sixty-seven, I think, Democrat Party members in the legislature on the House side. Can we just borrow maybe five or six Rangers to go get them? Anyway, I stepped off that platform today. Public comment, Lee, I think he has some information on registering brands. Now, for those of y'all that wonder about this, yes, we do have cattle in Texas. Yes, I still brand my cattle with a hot brand. Some people use a free brand. But anyway, if you want to register your brands, you register them at the courthouse, in the county clerk's office. I'm sure that, well, Mr. Culler or Bailey back there would just love to arrest somebody for cattle wrestling, but I don't think it's been done in quite a number of years, but it wouldn't bother him one bit, because I bet you he would. So if you would, Lee, enlighten us a bit on information on registering brands here for Liberty County.
Every ten years, this is an every-ten-year thing, kind of like redistricting, but every ten years, all of the brands expire, and you have to renew them. So if you've got a brand that's been in your family forever, which is like my spouse does, you will lose that if you don't renew it every ten years. The time to renew brands begins, they all expire August thirty-first. So you have from September first to February twenty-eighth to renew your brand, or you will lose it, or it will be subject, it kind of goes into the public domain, and someone's, I'm a little worried, because obviously some of our brand holders may have been deceased between now and then, but I'm really going to try to get the message out that people have to renew their brand. We've got a bunch of cards we're going to mail out to current brand holders. I'm just going to say it here every week for the next two or three meetings. Time to renew brands begins September one, and we will be doing them on, we have them on the computer now. We will upload them to the state computer. We'll help you with them as, you know, to put them in. But yeah, if you got it between September first and February twenty-eighth to renew your brands, or you could lose them and somebody could get it from you. They become public available after February twenty-eighth. So it's that time, ten years, let's renew our brands.
And I'm telling you, brands are not cheap to get.
It's twenty-six dollars to renew them.
Well, the twenty-six dollars, I don't have the brand itself fabricated. That's, it's not cheap. I'm the only guilty could find a blacksmith anymore that can do this, unless you go to Panera.
Some people put them on tags. I mean, you don't have necessarily, you know, there's other ways to brand them, but the brand markings, et cetera, and registering the brand markings, it's important to do, because if they get out, they'll lose it, the way they can use to track them. You know, that way, nobody's still your cattle. They still your cattle. You know what your cattle is, it's got your brand on it. So anyway, the brands, the cattle brands renewed beginning September first. So anyone you know that, you know, has got cattle, that's interested, they need to come in, give us a call. They cannot renew it August thirty-first, and have it, it's got to be after August thirty-first. So even if you, if you come in and register a brand on August thirtieth, guess what? In two days, you got to renew it, so.
And what's that fee again?
Twenty-six dollars.
Twenty-six dollars, okay. Cheap insurance. Any other public comments this morning? All right. Number six, declared conflicts of interest. Are there any, are there any conflicts of interest by the Commissioners Court on any items on the agenda? Not hearing any, let's move on. The consent agenda, I hope y'all had the opportunity to look over this. And Wayne, do you have any add-ons today?
Yes, I have a budget minimum from precinct four. It's transferring a thousand dollars from contract labor and ten thousand dollars from COVID expense to a thousand dollars for uniforms and ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars for man supplies. So I want to add one bill to be paid, is to Smith tow it for five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents.
What do we have to tow? What do we have to tow?
Somebody got a truck stolen.
Five fifty-eight and how much?
Five nineteen fifty-eight.
Five nineteen.
Make a motion to approve with additions.
Motion, Bruce, to approve, sir, to save the grade. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Leon, I can't see you.
Hang on, Jay.
There you go. Got you. Thank you. All right, move on to the regular agenda. Number one, County Attorney approved, thank you, Burns Architecture LLC, invoice number two, the county court of law, we're working on downstairs, seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Number eleven, shares new office, fourteen thousand seventy-five dollars, and invoice number eleven on the precinct three edx next door to the new shares office, for nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Leon, saving the grade and print, all voters say aye. Likewise, that motion can't stop, gentlemen. Next one's from Mr. C. Our first occasion, considering and approved pay app number three from White Construction, the amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand, two dollars and forty-three cents. And these are our bad risk values. And, Aaron?
Yeah, you should have your certifications for payments, sign up as a manager for White Construction and Architect in your package.
Yes. Make a motion to approve. Motion, Bruce, saving the grade and print. Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, there you go.
I thought she heard me the first time.
That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, for me, considering and approved the reappointment of Gil Page to the Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare Board of Trustees during two-year term. And Gil is very, very good at her job on this board, and she's agreed to go to your term, you know, but as we approve.
Thank you.
Motion, maybe, saving the Bruce. All voters say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries. Thank you. Number four, invite Commissioner Archer, considering and approved reappointment of Sunny DeBarge and Peter Broussard to ESD number two board. And that's going to be the ESD over in Daze.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce, saving the grid to approve, all voters say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries. Number five, had a little time, I want to get this straightened out real quick, was from Mr. Hugemeyer, our fire marshal. Considering and approved the stop removals replacement.
Correct.
Robert Trey, and Robert's moving out of the district, and he had to live in the district in order to serve in that ESD. Mercy Services Commission, that last word is the word that says it all. So Robert's moving out from ESD one, and we have Steve Mitchum that has agreed to take his place on the board for ESD number one.
Wait until, to. Make the motion to approve.
Make a set of his registration and approve.
Yes, well, let's do that. Leon, let's, let's make a motion to accept.
Accept his resignation.
Yeah.
And to approve the appointment of Steve Mitchum.
I say it.
Yes, all right. Did Leon get the motion? Grant got the second? All voters say aye. Likewise, Dave. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, I'm going to ask that we table this until the next meeting. Give us just a little bit of time, okay?
Make the motion to table.
Say.
Motion, Leon, second, Bruce to table, all voters say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, Richard Brown, our illustrious tax collector, and also, I believe, Nashville fan.
We call it words.
It's considering and approving the waiving of the base penalties difference taxpayer, Robert D. Alexander, the amount of two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, thirty-four cents, under the Texas Property Code, twenty-six point one five C.
Yes, sir, this is one of those old ones. We get the base tax, some notice, a couple areas that we can fall back on to give relief, but collecting the base tax, waiving the penalty and interest, but so. But collecting the base tax, waiving the penalty in interest, but so I recommend that y'all take that action.
Any discussion? Entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce, second, Greg, all favor say aye? Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Don't quit now, brother, we got one more. Number eight, considered approved the waiving of penalties and interest on account, seven seven five eight eight for taxpayer Cardinal Dental Group in the amount of a hundred and one dollars and eighty three cents.
Uh, yes, sir, somehow, um, this thing got mixed up in the billing, uh, through the C A D. I don't know, it was a couple, it did fall under that same waiver of, uh, clerch errors by either my office or the C A D's office. They didn't really even find out about it till they got their mail letter, which the attorneys picked up the right address, that there were some problems on the original posting of it. So, uh, it falls under the same category, given us, it's the same code, we just didn't cite the code in this one, but it's the same, same as number seven. Uh, they did pay the base tax, we have collected that. And it was where they're twenty twenty, so it's something that just slipped up on that. But the mail letter caught it, they came in and we're asking you to waive the penalty in interest.
Let's keep God your one minute happy.
Yeah, especially when the end amount.
That's right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from, uh, Bruce to approve. Second.
Aye.
Uh, second from Leon, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Go Astros.
Yes, sir, go Astros. Boy, Al Tuvie did knock it when I parked, didn't he?
He had to reach down and get it.
I know. Number nine, from, uh, Ms. Harris, our county treasurer. Considered approved clarification of salary payments to the school resource officer under constable precinct number two. Can you want to give us a look?
Um, yes, Mr. Young works for Constable Holsey and he is the designated school resource officer for the Halle Zeta and Bennett School District. Um, and we have been paying him according to the signed document that Mr. Holsey provided to us. And on the most recent payroll, Mr. Gott found exception with the payment, um, the related contract. And so I'm going to let Mr. Um, Poston take over from here because I think there have been lots of lawyers involved in the discussion of it. I'm no lawyer. So I'm simply here to ask the court what, what to do. How much should pay Mr. Young and what?
What would you do, Mr. Executive Session? Yes, we could, yeah, absolutely. Okay, let's, uh, pass this.
So this would, the executive session would be under discussing, uh,
Contracts.
Yeah, contracts.
You'll wait till the end of the, uh?
I think that'd be appropriate, yeah, just to tire everybody else out.
Okay. We'll move to number ten. Considering approved lease agreement with Pinket Joint Properties for the lease of, uh, nineteen fifteen Trinity Street, Liberty, Texas, that's the old law library. Still is a common law library, but also the elections office as well. And, uh, Matthew, you have some?
Uh, yes, it was just time for renewal. And so what you have in your packet is, uh, more or less a renewal lease agreement. I, I think the rent went up just a little bit, but honestly Catherine Hill isn't, I'm, I'm just blanking right now what the, the numbers are.
I think it was twelve, it was twelve, yeah, it was twenty seven, right, on there.
And that's not at lack of consideration location.
No, it is not. I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
What did it said? What, what, what is the numbers on that?
Twelve hundred and fifty.
Twelve fifty?
We have a motion from Bruce, a second, from Greg to approve. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven, uh, Matthew will toss this, we consider an approved rugby agreement with Exxon Global Pipeline Company for the construction with pipeline in Liberty County. We, we've been going back and forth, obviously, we finally got, uh, nailed down pretty well.
Yes, yes, so where it stands now, well, maybe I should back. So, um, whenever major pipeline construction, uh, contractors come through, uh, you know, in the past, we have identified what we expect the damages to our roads will be. And then we try to head off those damages. And, you know, some preliminary work on it, et cetera. And, uh, we, you know, largely, um, we negotiate each of these, um, you know, based on a case by case basis with each contractor. In, in this instance, um, what Exxon Global, and we've kind of gone back and forth with them as well, it, uh, as offered is a guaranteed amount of money, with a written guarantee by the bank certifying the funds of the air, uh, as well as a promise to release, uh, uh, you know, a payment for damages to road every time we more or less submit the invoice within five days. So, uh, this is, as well as the usual road bond. So we would have a road bond governing entirety for, uh, you know, all precincts that are touched by this property, as well as, uh, guaranteeing funds sitting there available to us within five days of submitting invoices. And this will require each road and bridge department to, to itemize their costs immediately. You know, uh, and all the, all the relevant costs. And we, we can go over details of that later, but that's, that's the general, general idea.
Majority of this pipeline companies or pipelines coming through precincts. And, uh, some of the verbiage that I'm reading in here, I, I can't agree with at this time, within fifteen days of completion of construction, as weather allows, Exxon shall notify county in order to complete all such road and maintenance work. Well, fifteen days, I, I just had two natural gas pipeline companies come through. They completed their job almost six months ago and it has been impossible for me to complete those jobs because of rain, which is specified as in here.
Yeah, sure.
But, uh, also just because a pipeline company decides to come through here, we still have obligations to our other citizens to make sure those roads are done. So we supposed to drop what we're doing, come with a deadline to do this just to appease, uh, a pipeline company? Our roads are rated for fifty eight thousand pounds. These trucks we know are going to be eighty thousand, ninety thousand pounds. So it's not a bill of if they, it's when they do, you know? So they are going to destroy our roads. Um, I, I, at this point in time, this was handed to me yesterday. I've had very little time to do this and go over it. Uh, I, I hope that, uh, we would negotiate just a little more on this before we approved it.
Absolutely, Commissioner, whatever the court wishes us to do, we'll do.
I had a couple of items that was, I'd like to clarify too. You know, we got just a total amount for all the roads. I like that amount broke down per road.
In the agreement.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Broke down per precinct on, on the amount, because I did submit a, a,
We have that.
Bill on there before this all come about.
I just didn't see it, I, I like that, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Matthew?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to see it also. I've, I've, I've not had the abilities to, been offered that ability to see this.
Well, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, I guess you didn't get it in the packet?
Okay.
It wa, okay, absolutely. No, I'm sorry. If y'all hadn't seen it, then, you know, of course, we might need a.
Can we back up and take it up next time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Make a motion to table.
Number eleven, we have a motion to table from Bruce, second, Greg, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave. And various. Number twelve, uh, precinct one, constable ten edition. Consider approved CoLogic cop sync for one year at fifteen hundred twenty six thousand forty cents to be paid from the J P's technology fund. And this is just a recurring, uh, fee if I'm not mistaken. And then we'll rather, what's the court's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce, second, Greg, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, uh, from Ms. Chambers, our county clerk, considering approved the renewal Liberty County Clerk Archive fee of ten dollars and extension of the Liberty County Archive and Restoration Plan, including the contract with D P S Cofile for fiscal year twenty twenty two, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, as required by Article section one one eight point zero two five. And we've discussed this, I believe it's linked already. So what's the court's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, from Ms. Chambers. Consider approved the gov dot Q A contract for public information request management and database software for eighteen thousand dollars to be paid from the Liberty County Clerk's Record Management Fund, which we have plenty in that fund.
Yes. As you might be aware, we've been getting, uh, an increased volume of public information requests. Uh, we don't really have a system in place to track those, monitor those, make sure they get responded in time, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of them are repetitive. Um, what the software does is it allows us to kind of create a central place. Um, it would be done in conjunction. I think we set it up for five different offices. So mine, uh, the county attorney, probably county judge, the sheriff, maybe the district clerk would be the other. Um, when they go through, they go to another department, they would have a certain amount of time to respond back because postings would be public. It also has a built-in thing for we, where we can redact information. So when somebody asks for our, uh, our, uh, you know, campaign financial reports, we can automatically redact the addresses of judges and, uh, police officials, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's really a very nice tool. Um, I think that because of everything happening in the county and continuing to happen in the county, this is a tool we really need. Um, I saw the demo, Catherine saw the demo, we were like, oh, yes. So it really, really is a nice tool. Um, now it includes them coming in, setting it up, teaching us how to use it, et cetera. The contract states that it would increase three percent a year, um, covering maintenance costs. So it's like a, a regular eighteen thousand a year thing with a three percent increase. Um, but we have more than sufficient funds to cover that. And it would probably be, you know, like I said, a central place on the webpage that people would come into to do their public information requests. So the idea is to try to funnel it through there and then that would give us a way to manage those in the future. Um, I really think we need this.
I would agree.
I would agree, yes. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, Bruce, second, Greg to approve, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, uh, Mr. Douglas over Department of Inspections.
I'm glad to see him back.
I am glad. It's good to see you back here, buddy. Thank you. It's good to be back. It is. Considering approved payment of the invoices from L J A Engineering in the amount of fifty six hundred and fifty dollars for engineering services on the hole, fresh water service district, and from T Johnson Industries in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for the same project. And I believe you had the.
What we've got here, uh, these funds have come in. They're now, uh, over at the treasurer's office. So we're ready to pay these. Dwayne's getting ready to pay them. Everybody's happy because we like getting the money in advance and payments. I'm going to ask you to approve those, uh, two payment requests. Uh, one to T Johnson and one to, uh, L J A.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, from, uh, Mr. Douglas. Considered and approved the following five invoices related to the whole F W S D project. Public management for fifty two hundred dollars, public management for thirty three hundred, L J A Engineering, nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents, and T Johnson Industries for twenty three thousand nine hundred and fifty eight dollars. And for T Johnson Industries, twenty five thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars. And this is all grant funded.
And this again is the whole fresh water supply district project. I believe that's in your precinct commissioner's office. And, uh, this was a Texas public, you know, until spring. These funds have not come in. We don't pay these particular bills until the funds come in.
Right.
So what I'm asking you to do is approve the payments at this time. But be aware that, uh, Dwayne will not make the payments until the money comes in.
Right. Okay.
Dwayne? Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, Greg, approve, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, David. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, from Commissioner Wilson, considering approved extension of lease agreement at three ten Main Street and adjustment of rent in light of such extension, proposed renovations and market value. Leon?
Yes, sir. Okay, um, this began, uh, when we started looking at the work area of, uh, our auditor, Dwayne. And we found that he's fixing to have some additional employee come in along with possibly a new employee. And they're very limited in their, in the work area. We made some adjustments and, uh, what we felt like could, uh, take place within that office. And that being, um, adding some additional office area. Um, and along with, uh, splitting some of the other offices up. Dwayne and I met with the, uh, building owner and advised him what our thoughts were. And, uh, he was in agreements to it. He wouldn't, he really wasn't, uh, wanting to do that because it doesn't fit his needs. But he was in agreements to do it, uh, in order to, uh, help the county and to help, uh, Dwayne. See, all, all that woodwork in that office is hand, is handmade, is, is done by the, the property owner herself. And, uh, he really, he had reservations about it first, but he's agreed to go ahead and, uh, and allow the renovations of, within that office. With the exception that, um, if that were to be done, that he has an increase in, uh, rent per month to twenty six hundred a month, which I feel like is a pretty dead gum good deal. Uh, I think they had, he had some, um, individuals that, um, had looked at the property and they said it could easily bring forth thirty five hundred a month easily. So I think this is a, a, a good move for the auditor's office. I think it's a fair market deal, very fair for the county on twenty six hundred a month as far as the, the rent is, is, uh, is explained to y'all. Dwayne, do you, do you have anything you need to, you want to add to this?
We need more space, I don't know anywhere close to the corner of the side. Plus, I think there's brim for coffers, brim of this same plant, uh, which you.
That's the last, like, ten year old.
Were the rim rubbing for, for rabies, basically. Has Matthew, have you looked over the contract?
I had it.
I'm saying he was waiting on, you know, before he moved to contract with them.
Correct.
I believe it's a good move.
I'm sorry?
I believe it's a good move. I'm just waiting for a motion to say.
I made the motion we approve. I, I'd say it's a, uh, it's a, uh, a good deal for Liberty County and for the, for the auditor's office. It's going to allow him to expand and, uh, have more room in there for additional employees.
Motion Leon, second Greg to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen. Say, consider to approve list of certain items for auction, always. Unless, we need to get rid of some service.
Oh, yeah, always. This has some trucks, some coffers, hogs, mostly computer, old computer, equipment, printers, which every time we have an auction, we get rid of a lot of old computers and printers, and we still got it. It's a part of the assembly departments to give us a list of what they have that we're working on. Stephanie's doing real well. You know, we did, we used to auction about once a year, and she turned in one every two months.
Yeah.
Bring this, bring that, that's some good money on us.
All right, I've looked over the list. Much stuff we need to get rid of. Make a motion to approve. Bruce, second Greg to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. See, Harold, you got a few more here, so don't sit down yet. Number nineteen, consider to approve accepting and awarding bid number twenty-one dash thirteen for asphalt overlay for road bridge number two.
Okay, this was for three roads, CR twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, thirty-five, and two-zero-nine-four. Twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, thirty-five, twenty-nine-four. Yeah.
I got it. I got it now.
We got five vendors, Maiden, Maiden, Angel Brother, Texas Materials, Cowboy Asphalt, Baltimore Materials. We did two different options. Option one on each road was a two-inch overlay. Option two was a three-inch. And no matter which route you go, any roads, any option, local material is the lowest bidder of all.
Right now, I'm thinking we'll only accept options for whatever cost it, twenty-two, thirty-five.
It ended up getting, I was like, efficient to see what it was going to be.
Yeah.
Whether you had the money or not.
Yeah.
So, option one, twenty-two, thirty-five, both of them.
Well, hold on, two roads.
Yeah, I can't hear that.
A second. I wish you left Dwayne, I'd be a little worried.
He just left. Got you a little break, buddy.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, Jay?
I know, yeah. You owe a little break, so you can get another two roads.
No, no. No, no.
Yeah, motion Greg, second.
Yes.
From Bruce to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, that. I'm hoping that some of your constituents are listening on YouTube, they understand that twenty-two, thirty-five will get taken care of, and why twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-ninety-four will not. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. See, we got to number twenty, consider to approve the lease purchase of a twenty-twenty-two Mack TI sixty-four-T truck, retired manufacturer, dump bin, Volvo and Mack Trucks, Waco, hundred-thirty-six-thousand dollars, nine, hundred-thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, buy board for road bridge number four.
Okay, this is a lease purchase with a guaranteed buyback. Precincts twenty-three and four, that was the last year. Precinct two, that one that's up in June. This is basically renewing the lease of the new truck, twenty-twenty-two.
And I will say that Leon needs this truck.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Leon, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-one, consider to approve financing of a twenty-twenty-two Mack TI sixty-four-T truck, retired manufacturer, dump bin, bankroll, south, putting finance for road bridge four, this is the same project. Just need to get away to take care of the financing.
Yes.
What's your motion to approve?
Motion from Bruce. Second Leon, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. For twenty-two, consider to approve awarding debris removal service contract to HGC by contract number DR zero-nine-dash-seventeen. It's a one-year contract with a one-year extension. Here, we've looked over these, pretty much beat these bet.
Yeah. Just so everybody knows, we looked, well, I actually went out for bids in April to see if any local vendors were interested, and nobody turned in a bid. It was advertised as a paper, everything was supposed to do with. All these, all these people listed, if we'd have sent them out to companies, all these people listed would have been the ones we sent up. They had already answered RFP with HGC. HGC sends RFP, really good thorough. They rate them based on things like experience, financial stability, preferences, whatever, a hundred-point system. And then they take the ones that meet all other criteria, and they put them in a pool. HGC members can pull from that pool, pull from that pool. And we're required, we have to look at least three of them and get all the information. All the rates have been turned in HGC, so that's all part of it. We can, we can negotiate and get lower rates, and who knows what they mean, what they power than what they told HGC. So we had, let's see, they had seven vendors in the pool. I contacted all of them, since right back in May. And two, everybody responded except for two. We got no response. So I went with the five that we had, and I started to ask some questions. I got over the sheet. Her current rates, she wanted to make sure it was in line with what HGC had. And after going through everything and looking at it, it said, we're trying to look at three of them, pick out those three. I went in, there was five, I went in, did all five. So you have in there, if you go to these sheets in the back, I went through some of the categories, like the debris removal on the roadway, removal of hazards, trees and limbs, stumps, white goo, removal of white goo, just like refrigerator, washer grubs. I took those categories and I had no idea, so I guesstimated, you see on my sheets, like cubic yards for removal. I just took in this, another county's what they had, and a wild guess, made up, we did a hundred thousand cubic yards for anything under fifteen miles, fifty trees, fifty stumps. I plugged that in as a way to take their rate per unit or per cubic yard and extend it out so that we could compare, which is what the front sheet did. So when you see that, that's just a way to compare it using the rates. And we had a hurricane or whatever, I mean, it's probably no way Crowder Gulf's going to do one point eight million dollars. That's just an estimated number for comparison purposes. Schedule one, if you look at HGC, they have a schedule one, which is basically the trees, the white goo, refrigerators, the stumps, limbs, whatever. And they have a schedule two, which is the rate of equipment, things per day, for equipment, crew members, foremen, whatever. So I took those schedule one and schedule two, added together, and that's what we got estimated totals, just for comparison purposes. Crowder Gulf, they said we had a contract with it, ended at the end of hurricane season last year. Merchant Management said they're easy to work with, they did a good job, they worked well with the state. They ended up being our lowest bidder using, using this criteria. I met with a committee, went to a committee of, I think, and we met, I think, last week or week before, and explained all this to everybody, and everybody kind of agreed to stick with Crowder Gulf. There, all these people are, I mean, real anxious and really, really want to do this. I sent some questions and asked them, I think Crowder Gulf did a forty-eight-hour response. They said like, if a hurricane was coming in, they would start moving stuff this way. They would hire local people, local contractors, which is a requirement of FEMA.
Right.
And several other questions. All of them, they answered, were just exactly what we needed. So I think the committee suggests or recommends that we warrant it to Crowder Gulf. I put on there one year with one year extension.
What did we have with them last year? Same thing.
The contract, it started seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay, it was a five-year, and that's, that's the way HGC is. They started in seventeen, they had a five-year contract. They've extended it, they're fixing to extend it again. So I was trying to stay in line with them. I didn't know that at this time they're going to extend it. I think they are now on August thirty-first. So I put one year, so we could kind of stay with HGC, but with renewal. I put one-year extension. I mean, you could do one, two, or three, or whatever.
I'm getting it with our contract now with the one that just expired with Crowder Gulf, is in that contract, is there provisions for just extending that contract we already have?
That one said, that's one of the, and it said that you can have an extension, but you have to allow the vendor to come back in and.
Okay.
To me, if you do that, that's not giving everybody a fair deal. You know, change the rates. So, yeah, no, no, it's ended with enough.
Make a motion to approve with Crowder Gulf.
I second that motion, but I'd like to ask. Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Harold and I were speaking yesterday about this, and I think Crowder Gulf is the way for us to go. Let me ask you, do you see to where it would be possible that we could utilize a secondary company as a standby? And the reason I ask that is, is God forbid, if we were to have a massive hurricane that hit our area along this Gulf Coast that affected us greatly, and Crowder Gulf was unable to keep up with the demands, that we would have the ability to call in a second contractor? Do you see where we could move on this this morning?
I believe so, but this is what I would encourage, is I think a motion doing that contingent on, you know, a legal review, you know, in communication with HGC would be advised. That way, we can just double-check. I don't want to make, you know, any mistakes such that would make it difficult for the county to get reimbursed later on down the line. I think that would be just fine. I imagine that larger counties whose needs are so great, you know, would have multiple contractors in order to fulfill the requirements. So I don't see that that would, more likely, that wouldn't be a problem. And I just want to make doubly sure, you know, we're about to spend perhaps millions on something that we get it back.
So your recommendations for, would be, let's go ahead and table this for the time being, bring it back next court?
I would go ahead and move on, and, you know, I don't know who you're thinking, you know, say Crowder Gulf and the next lowest bidder, and, or whoever. And contingent on a legal review and, you know, certification by your counsel or HGC, that that would be appropriate. So just.
Bruce, you want to amend that motion?
I'm looking to Crowder Gulf and the next lowest bidder. And who is, Sirius, Sirius Environmental Services.
All right, so we have a motion, Bruce, second Leon, with that amendment. Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. What about the debris monitoring contract, Harold?
We have a contract, that's right. Merchant Management also said they were good to work with. They're also HGC contractor. It produces, it's a little different than the Crowder Gulf. It reduces automatically the bulk of debris as a seven. So I talked to them a little bit, and I was getting this out of the way, and talked to them more that, you know, if we decide to reduce the bid, probably get back for it. But it's gone for another deal.
I just wanted to bring out some clarification, so y'all will know that there is something in the works on debris monitoring as well. Okay. Number twenty-three, from the sheriff. Consider to approve quote from McGriff Insurance Services Incorporated to insure the twenty-nineteen American airboat, Air Ranger. Number one, for personal use endorsement, removed from the previous quote, two, Liberty County use only, amended to cover inland and protected coastal waters of Texas, a traditional premium of two billion dollars, for a total annual premium of five thousand. Airboats are not cheap to insure.
Yes, sir, Judge. I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I got the problems that were on here. And one thing we did, Captain Knox and I went to several different companies working with McGriff to see if anybody else could do a marine on just one boat, and most of them wanted to plead with ships and wouldn't do it. The local markets wouldn't ride it because of the, really, the engine size and where it was used. So McGriff was the only market we could get. The personal use endorsement, in the first quotes, it had to be for personal use only. They took that out and didn't charge us anything for that. But when we went, it was limited only to Liberty County waters, and we asked to expand it because Orange County, Harris County, everybody's always come over to help us, Jenkins County, we had need for airboats, they'd come and help us. So they added, actually, the whole state of Texas for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Each one of those is included?
Yes.
All right, what's the court's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion Leon, second Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Number twenty-four, from our friends at Landmark. We have considered to approve bids on linked attached properties, as follows. Jay Porche, twelve-hundred dollars on property ID number one-six-eight-fourty-five, D.H. Hubert, six thousand, ID number seven-four-three-zero-seven, Allen, twenty-two-five, thirty-two-two-seven-eight, Boyer, twelve-thousand, six-eight-one-two-five, Flynn, thirty-six-hundred, property number seven-two-eight-one-three, Ward, thousand dollars on property sixty-eight-four-two, Thompson has two, first one being twenty-five-hundred-and-ten, nine-five-seven-nine-two, and then four-hundred-and-ninety dollars on one-zero-eight-eight-on-nine, Ball, thirty-eight-hundred, on property number one-three-six-one-four-two, Princess, one-six-one-one-nine, and Varela, thirty-five-hundred dollars on property number seven-three-zero-eight-two. Now, we have any discussion on these?
As the court realizes that, since I've been in office, I take these very personal. I take them very seriously, these pieces of property we have taken, and now we are selling them, putting them back on the tax roll, which the county does need the income from. On this lot here, I have found two major mistakes the Landmark has made on land that we have already sold. I'm asking now that we table all of these, to let Landmark go back through them, make sure there is no mistakes on the next ones that come up.
Got a motion from Bruce to table, second Leon. Further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're going to go back and pick up number nine. We're going to first move into executive session, so it's now, well, straight up to the clock, about the clock on the back wall. Ten AM, the motion would move into executive session.
We're going to go into executive session.
Motion from Bruce to second. Is that motion presented five-five-one-zero-seven-four, the government code concerning personal matters?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, it is. Okay. Yes, it is. Five-five-one-zero-seven. Oh, seven-four. Oh, seven-four. There it is. Okay. We'll have a glass. Got a motion from Bruce, second Leon, to executive session. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, that motion carries. At ten fifty-five, we're back in regular session, now executive session. Considerations on item number nine, on a regular agenda, which we moved into executive session. Uh, we have any, any motions to make at this time?
Uh, I would ask Commissioners Court to, uh, consider a motion, make a motion, um, to approve, uh, to, uh, allow the county treasurer to approve payment, uh, for Deputy Constable George Young, uh, in an amount up to, uh, the budgeted amount, but specifically the, uh, up to the amount that is requested, uh, by, uh, Constable Les Holsky, uh, for, uh, that pay period where the, uh, deputy constable, uh, will be paid, uh, how to put it, the, uh, appro rated amount for this pay period, uh, not to exceed, uh, the budgeted amount.
I make that motion with the addition of, until we get clarification for.
Absolutely, until we get an AG, and he does continue to work with the tax office. Yes. Or any other assigned duties, uh, that he's assigned by us.
Second one.
Do you have a motion made?
Yes, from, from Greg, second Bruce. Got a motion of second, uh, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, let me just say for clarification that the amount that's been approved by Constable Holsy is forty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars per year. And so the amount that will continue to be paid to, um, Deputy Young will be that amount of forty thousand five twenty divided by twenty-four each pay period until further notice.
Until, uh, Officer Holsky issues you a payroll change notice.
Correct.
Changing that amount.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'm gonna tell you. Motion from, uh, Bruce, second Greg to adjourn, all favor say aye.